Thirteenth School Board Meeting. Could we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome our new Superintendent, Meredith Nato. Meredith comes to us with eighteen years of education experience. Most recently, she was Director of Instruction, Special Education Curriculum Humanities, and Professional Development in the Oyster River Cooperative School District in Durham, New Hampshire for the past four years. Meredith came on board with us in the midsummer on a part-time basis and has been full-time with us since the twenty-third of July. We are thrilled to have you, Meredith, and it's been a really nice start. We had a coffee last Friday for the public and had probably fifty or sixty parents stop by to meet Meredith and welcome her to the community. And I would encourage anyone in the public who would like to meet her to contact us, and we may be setting up another coffee in the future, so welcome, Meredith. I'd also like to welcome our two School Board Representatives from the high school. We have Abby Donnelly, who's on the left, and Abby is a junior at the high school, and Sasha Lennon, who is a senior. So they have signed on for a year to provide us inside information from the high school. Thank you, girls, very much for joining us and for being part of our group.
Technically, for the TV, it's reversed.
Oh, that's right. That's right, so...
And shouldn't we disclose that Donnelly equals Townsend?
Yes, Abby Donnelly is my daughter. So Sasha Lennon is the daughter of Sarah Lennon, who is on the town council, so it runs in the family, I guess. We're happy to have you. So with that being said, let's move on through our agenda. We have a short agenda this evening. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda? Anything anyone would like to add? No? Okay. Number two, we have approval of School Board Minutes. Do I have a motion for that? And these were from our regular meeting, which was Tuesday, the twenty-third of August two thousand and eleven. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion. I move to approve the School Board Minutes for, from the past.
Okay, from the August twenty-third meeting?
Yes.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, Kathy? All right, any discussion around that? Any changes? Okay. All those in favor? Great. All right, so we will move on now to our comments by our student reps.
We do have two students here from the middle school as well, so I want to welcome Gabby Raymond and Eva Mealy.
Oh, great. Come on up.
Hi, I'm Eva Mealy.
And I'm Gabby Raymond.
And we are here representing the students of Tappleswood Middle School.
This year, the Middle School Parents Association is starting a new fundraiser called Local Buy, which is a catalog that features main handcrafted items.
Four citizens or businesses of Cape Elizabeth have items in the catalog. The money they get will benefit outdoor programs for the middle school.
They want to send the fifth grade to the Freedom Trail, sixth grade to Chauki, and the seventh and eighth grade to Camp Ketchum.
This week on Thursday, the seventh and eighth, this week on Thursday, the seventh and eighth grade have their open house at six PM, and the fifth and sixth have theirs on September twentieth.
We interviewed two children from each grade about the school year. The kids in seventh and eighth grade found that the new schedule is confusing and not as productive. Also, they wish that they were their own grade in lunch and allied ads. They like their teachers, and the school year has been good so far. Eighth graders have been surprised about how much homework they've had.
The sixth graders have mixed opinions. Some think it is well-made, and some do not enjoy it, this is the schedule. They all think that the teachers are nice and hilarious. They say the school year has been good. The fifth graders like having different teachers and moving classrooms. They like it more than fourth grade. The teachers are very nice. Their lunches are good, and the same with every school year.
Everyone has had a good, has had a good school year so far, and they hope to keep it that way.
The Harvest Lunch this year will be on September twenty-second. We will not have school on October tenth because of Columbus Day.
Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you, girls.
Thank you.
Yes, high school.
Hello? Okay, hello. My name is Sasha Lennon. I'm a senior at the high school. I am part of the Fresh Links program that helps freshmen come into the high school and transition well, and so far, everything's going great with that. The Environmental Club also had a vegetable sale from vegetables that we grew in our garden. I thought that was really interesting and creative. And I'm also on the high school soccer team, and so far, we are undefeated. And this week, we face Falmouth and Greeley in one week, so hopefully, that goes well. That will be a big challenge for us, but thank you for having me.
Hi, I'm Abby Donnelly. I am a junior at the high school. And as some of you know, or were there, we had a football game against York, was it, on Friday? And something unusual we did was before the game, we actually had a student-run tailgate in the senior parking lot, which was a huge hit. And we actually had more fans in the student section than I think we've ever had before, and that's good. Also, Spirit Week is next week, and we'll have a lot of activities surrounding that. And yeah, basically, just all the clubs are starting to get up and running again, and we kind of hit the ground running, so thanks for having me.
Great. I actually heard there were two-hundred-and-fifty students in the student section, is that right? Cheering on the football team?
That's what I was saying.
Yeah, that's great. Okay. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate that. Do we have any comments from public, from the public on agenda items? I wanted to point out that although we don't have a public comment time for non-agenda items anymore, anyone is more than welcome to contact us on any item, and if you'd like to get it on the School Board Agenda, there just needs to be several days beforehand, we need to hear from you and have a discussion about putting it on our agenda. So we're always happy to hear from people. If you have items you'd like to discuss, please don't hesitate to be in contact with us. All right, we will move on to item number five, which is Communications and the Superintendent's Report. Meredith?
Thank you. Make sure I sit close enough to the microphone. So let's just start by saying we had a great opening, and I think people don't always realize all the things that have to happen behind the scenes to get the school year up and running. So our thanks to our facilities and maintenance staff, our transportation department, our food service staff, all of whom worked very hard to prepare things before people came into school so that things would be ready, ready to run smoothly, our community services department as well, and absolutely, our administrators, teachers, and staff who were there during the summer, before school, early mornings, making sure that classrooms were welcoming and that students would be well-received when school started. Included in your packet is, are the enrollment figures as of September sixth, so these are just draft enrollment figures. They tend to fluctuate a little bit in the opening of school, and our official enrollment count happens on October first for the state. But as of September sixth, our enrollment was one-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty students across the district, so it's slightly below June of last year, about twenty students below where we were last year, but I don't think unanticipated. On our opening day, we were able to recognize those employees who've had five, ten, fifteen, twenty, or twenty-five years of service for the school district, and a list of those employees is included in your packet. I will highlight for you just those twenty-five-year veterans, who are Karen Allen and our Community Services Department, and James Ray, a high school teacher. There are also a number of people in those other categories, and a full list of those is published on our website. CF recognized a couple of award recipients on our opening day as well. The two-thousand-eleven Brownell Award winner was Ginger Raspeler, who coordinates the Achievement Center at the high school. And the Thompson Award recipient was Elaine Brunell, who just retired from service to the district last year. So our compliments to both of them, and our thanks to CF for that recognition. And finally, I'll acknowledge that we had a resignation from Melissa Stevens, a middle school executive function and RTI teacher at the middle school, and we appreciate her service to the district and wish her well in her new endeavors. And I think some of our administrators may have updates for you as well. I know Jeff, I'm a thorac anyway.
I'll be brief, but thank you for giving me a moment to just provide a few updates this fall. We're off and running, and quite literally, things, it's amazing once preseason starts how quickly things move forward, so, but off and running and onto a good start. And really, just wanted to quickly update everyone on our first major athletic event that we hosted on last Friday night, and as our students stated, that it was a huge success. It's a fantastic, I think, community event. I mean, they're all ages from first grade right up through to our senior citizens as well. So it's, it's really a community event. I'd say that the bleachers, our capacity is about fourteen-hundred, and those bleachers were jam-packed, and students were standing, so that's even an increasing part of that. So I, and I counted the rows and depth, and I was guessing around two-hundred-and-fifty students, so that was, that was pretty impressive. I'd say by far, that was one of the largest student sections that I've been a part of, so, and very appropriate, I might add. I'd like to just recognize Sam Donnelly, Noah Backer, and Luke Sisselman for really orchestrating that event. They did a wonderful job of creating a positive atmosphere, and the students just did a fantastic job of supporting the teams on the field. And I think I should recognize Tom Kohan, Tatiana Green, and Ted Jordan for really helping with the barbecue. That was, that was a big hit. It was a nice way to kind of bring everyone together before the game, and then the students had made a big, long line that almost reached the entire length of the lower parking lot to the, to the swimming pool for the football players to run through. So it was really special, and I was really, really pleased to see not only our high school students there, but our middle school Ponco families, families of alumni. It was really, it was, it was a great night, and we're really looking forward to feeding off that positive energy into our next events, which will lead into Spirit Week, which is next week, and we'll have some details coming out shortly for that, but we're really excited, so fantastic. Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
I'd like to make one comment. I went to the, I wouldn't call it open house on sports, or whatever that you conducted, and I just want to tell you, Jeff, I thought you did an excellent job. It's a difficult subject to talk to parents and the whole issue of coaches, parents, athletic directors, students, and I just thought you did an excellent job.
Thank you.
And I was surprised at how well-spoken you were, and you could, we'd usually hire you in my firm to be a trial lawyer, but you did a great job, absolutely great job.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, oh, just a second.
Sorry, Jeff. So unfortunately, I missed the game. I was out of town. It's great to hear your, the stories of the game, but I was stuck reading the newspaper story about it, and just wanted to ask about this safety of the players, both the Cape players and the opposing team players, and whether you can, you know, tell us a little bit about, about what's being done to, to protect the safety of everybody in the game.
Well, first, the score was twenty-eight to seventeen, and we didn't really get a lot of that story in the, in the article, so there was a lot more to it than that. But no, I think there are, there are a ton of safety measures now. Coaches are required to take a concussion course through the National Federation of High Schools. We have an onsite team doctor, athletic trainers, and we have the ambulance service available as well. But it's a lot of education, and I think not only from the coaching side, but from officials as well. They're obviously with the heightened awareness of concussions are really focusing their attention on some preventative-type things where hopefully, kids are being safe and avoiding those types of things. But it is a, those things do happen, unfortunately, and I was really impressed with how our athletic trainer, Dr. Murray, our team physician, and the Cape Elizabeth Ambulance Service and how they responded to that and treated the student. Followed up in a, there was an article the next day in the Press Herald that the child was able to return back before the team got there, and they all welcomed him back, so he was, he was okay, and so that was fortunate. I was very pleased with, you know, the efforts that were taken, and the proactive approaches our coaching staff take in making sure that our kids are being safe.
Okay, great.
Anyone else? I have two, two comments. Number one, just a question. Do we have ambulances at every, every football game?
Correct.
Great, okay. I was just checking.
It is a service that we have to pay for, but one that we feel is very important to have, so...
Yeah. And the second is just a comment about the turf and how happy I am to hear your comments about the turf, because I remember when we were building it, that it was really sold as a community builder and as a place where kids could go and, you know, spend these Friday nights cheering on their team in a safe place and have the whole community together. So it makes me really, I think, really happy that it's being utilized to the fullest extent.
And they're, you know, with the administration covering and having the faculty there, and then these coverage as well, it is, it is really a safe environment for, for young people.
Yeah, it's great, so that's great news.
I didn't read these articles, but I did see the incident, and after I was completely impressed, but we made a great decision having a full-time trainer. She was right over there.
Yes.
The coaches were there, both, both teams, the ambulance got there real quick, they boarded the person. I mean, it was, it was not what had happened, would have happened when I was in high school.
Yeah.
And it was, I, I thought it was excellent. I don't know what was reported in the paper, if it was negative at all, but I thought it was a tremendous response by our, by our school system.
Well, thank you, Jeff, for all of your work.
Sure.
Really appreciate it. We'd love to hear from other administrators as well, if you have anything to report. We didn't have student reps from Ponco. Is there anything you'd like to tell us about, Tom? Not to put you on the spot.
No, that's fine. It's actually something to be proud of, just to follow up what Meredith said. I've been here for many years, and the schools usually start with a great deal of energy and enthusiasm, but this year, it seems to have topped them all. I think it's in reference to all the work that was done behind the scenes over the summer, and you're getting your money's worth from the consultants, too, because of the work that was done with professional development is bearing fruit as we speak. Probably tonight, people are studying the Daily Five and getting ready for the lessons, so it's been a great start for Ponco.
Great.
Any specific questions? Four-square rules?
Four-square.
Yeah. Let's calm down for the year, actually. No, no concussions lately.
That'll change.
Kate, question?
Tom, I wanted to see if there's any way I could help support you in the parking situation or the pickup situation for Ponco. I know that...
I did take a few jobs, didn't I, last week?
Yes.
Yeah, it seems to have improved just by, by peer pressure.
Yeah.
So anybody who's listening tonight, please follow the rules with parking, because it's, it gets dangerous for those kids walking through the parking lot. And I'm glad you read the notice. That's good.
Okay, could you enlighten us because, or the public, because I'm not sure, I mean, those of us who do not have elementary school... Tom, do you want to summarize?
We have, when we dismiss five or six hundred kids every day, they all go different ways, and on certain days, there are a lot of pickups. We have a very clear procedure for people driving cars to come into the loop and wait their turns in a designated area, both for safety and for supervision. And occasionally, as the kids say, the grown-ups cut, which is frowned upon by kids, so I'm trying to shame grown-ups into following the rules, because the rules really work. The most it will cost people to wait in line is maybe thirty seconds, and I always say, if you really want to do it the way I would do it, you can just park and walk up and say hello to your child. So thank you. That's a good message to get across.
I know it's anxiety-producing for the parent who's down the end of the line. Who knows it's, what's the proper time for pickup? You can wait, you can be at the end of the line by the crossing guard, waiting for your turn, and it seems anxiety-producing to pick up your child, but they're safe with a staff in front.
Staff members.
And if you wait your turn and not cut through the parking lot, or park, double-park, or park going the wrong direction, you actually get there much quicker. The line goes faster.
And you can always park legally.
You can always park.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, that's the non-academic part, but thank you. It's important.
Right. Anything else?
I was just wanting, I, I can't remember if Jeff was going to give a report.
Well, we're asking the administrator, each administrator, something to report. So Steve, do you have anything that you want to bring up? I'm sorry to put you on the spot. If you don't, your student reps covered a lot, I know.
I'm just going to quickly echo what Tom said, that it's just been, every year, some people ask you the same question, kind of a start of your hand. Hey, great start, and this is a great start. Really, really working well. And we put in a lot of time with a lot of folks this summer, working on professional learning community models, working under the goals, and we've done some restructuring of our schedule, as you could hear from a couple of kids, that accommodates those and tries to take advantage of some of the time to get people who teach literacy, the opportunity built into their schedule to be able to meet during the day. And so it causes us to make some shifts in our schedule. For instance, instead of having seventh grade and eighth grade on two halves of the cafeteria, we have one half that has a combination of seventh and eighth graders, and then the other seven, the rest of the seventh and eighth graders come at the next lunch period. And it's really one sole purpose, let's get those people time to meet and work professionally to continue to make progress on our goals around literacy and professional learning communities.
That sounds great. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Thanks for the update, Steve. Sorry to put you on the spot like that. Jeff, anything?
I guess I really just will echo the French Fresh Links program that Sasha talked about. I think it's been a labor of love by, loved by Troy Henninger and Trish Brigham, who's been very instrumental behind the scenes in getting it organized. And it really involves each person who's an upper link. Sasha is one, taking, I think it's ten to twelve students kind of under their wing, and just saying hi to them on a regular basis. And that goes an awfully long way. The tailgate event, I will say that we had really high school spirit last year compared to where we traditionally are, because our kids tend to be so busy, it's really hard for them to come out to other colleagues, friends, peers, games. So it's really meaningful to the players when that happens, and it really sets a tone for the school as a whole. And I thought our senior class last year had, showed some really tremendous positive leadership, and I'm thrilled that this year's senior class are just taking that to the next level. So that's going to be fantastic, and I look forward to it.
Okay. We'll move on now to new business. Item A, consideration to approve the following athletic and extracurricular staff nominations for the two-thousand-eleven, two-thousand-twelve school year. And I would, I would think that we should probably do these as a slate. Do I have a motion, please?
Sure. I move for the approval of the athletic and extracurricular staff nominations for the two-thousand-eleven, two-thousand-twelve school year as listed in the packet.
Second.
Okay. And these are posted online for anyone who's interested. Any discussion around these nominations? All right, so all those in favor? All right, item B, consideration to appoint a School Board member as a delegate to the MSBA, which is the Main School Boards Association Annual Assembly. And that will be taking place on Thursday, October twenty-seventh, two-thousand-eleven in Augusta. Do I have a motion, please?
I move that the School Board appoint David Hellman as a delegate to the Main School Boards Association Annual Assembly, taking place on Thursday, October twenty-seventh, two-thousand-one in Augusta.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I second.
Can I make a slight amendment to it, just to make it easy, that I also be appointed to go, to be the school representative to the Fall Annual Conference by the MSBA, which takes place at the same time?
Okay.
So you can simply move it as amended?
Yes, please, please move it as amended.
And a second? Yes, okay. All right, any discussion?
Thank you, David, for...
Thank you, David.
Well, we actually accomplished some things last year, and hopefully, we will this year.
All right, great. All those in favor? All right, item number C, consideration to approve the following staff nominations for the two-thousand-eleven, two-thousand-twelve school year. We have an employee named Laura Ellis for the RTI Executive Functioning Services Teacher. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I move to approve Laura Ellis as the RTI Executive Functioning Services Teacher, grades fifth and sixth for the two-thousand-eleven, two-thousand-twelve school year.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, David. And anything you would like to tell us about Laura?
Sure. Laura has worked with us in a part-time capacity prior years, and we are thrilled to have her take on this position. I know that Mr. Connolly and a team of people at the middle school interviewed several applicants, and she was their top pick. So we're thrilled, but she's taking on the position.
Any questions for Meredith, or...
It might be helpful, just for citizens that aren't in the school system, maybe just a little bit on what is a RTI Executive Functioning Services Teacher's role within the middle school?
Sure, and I'll begin this, and I'll certainly invite Mr. Connolly to add to my description of that as he sees fit, but Response to Intervention is a structure that was enacted across the country, but Maine adopted the legislation a couple of years ago that requires school districts to develop systems to intervene appropriately for students who are struggling academically, academically, particularly in the areas of math and reading. So this position is intended to provide some targeted support to students who may need to bolster their skills in a particular area. Laura will be working with fifth and sixth grade students. It's a, it's not, students aren't permanently assigned to that role. They're there for a period of time to work on skills, and they move in and out of that. It's available to any student. Executive function support refers to those organizational skills that are still developing, some of us as adults, but certainly, middle school is a, is a great place to begin some of those work habits and organizational skills. If there's anything you'd want to add?
Laura will be teaching, the Response to Intervention tells us that, you know, as we're looking at the model, it's a tiered model. So the first tier is the classroom, and the second, then the classroom teacher and the general work that goes on while... the general work that goes on, quality curric, viable curriculum, viable assessments, and then how you know, the pyramid that you put in place when things aren't working for students. So the second tier is when you enable the teachers to have specific tools, research-based tools, to work with students who are experiencing deficits, but you have to be able to identify those first. So Deans, Harris, and the Technology Department, and all those folks have really put some good references in our hands and made it very teacher-friendly to use. So we're getting more tech savvy. And then the third tier is when kids are experiencing quite a bit of difficulty. As Mike Matos would say from, he's a national consultant formerly of Pioneer Middle School in San Diego, he would say that you have to identify the kids who need CPR, that need triage, let's service those kids immediately, get them in, into the stream. So we've set up a couple of classes that we think will assist them. For instance, it's a double-dip literacy, so they go to their regular language arts class, but they have a second period with their homeroom teachers, but they have a second literacy class that they pick up that's working on specific comprehension strategies, reading fluency, some other core elements to that literacy. And then there's, there's a math offering as well.
Thank you. And a quick question, Steve. Executive functioning is not a term. I, I would associate a different term, I would associate that term to have a different meaning than I think it does. Isn't that essentially basically teaching middle school students that needed study skills, organization skills?
Yeah.
How to allocate their time, how to manage time, so forth?
Yeah, pull the executive functioning support, the EFS label out, and just put in organizational skills. It means that how do you assist students to effectively execute the functions of being a fifth grade student, a sixth grade student, whatever it happens to be? That's typically the organizational aspect.
Just a caveat, I mean, not a caveat, just a comment. I've always thought that that was a function we should be starting doing in the middle school and not wait till the high school. And so I'm, I'm personally pleased to see that starting to happen in the middle school because I think by the time you hit high school, it's enough with the subject matter, you should have the basic skills as well.
Thank you, Steve. Okay. All right. I'm going to call the vote if there are no additional questions or comments. Okay, all those in favor? Seven oh. All right. We'll move on to item D, consideration to appoint a school board member to the Transportation Appeals Committee. May I have a motion, please? John?
I would like to nominate Kate Williams Hewitt.
Do I have a second? Second. Okay. Any questions or comments?
Just to clarify what the Transportation Appeals Committee is.
Yes.
Essentially, it's, it's an opportunity, if parents are unsatisfied with the transportation routes as they're published, to appeal to the board level for some relief.
Is there someplace they ought to go before they appeal to the board level, or is that the only, is that the appeal process?
They certainly can contact the Transportation Office for clarification, but if, if it's not resolved at that level, there's an appeal process to the board.
Okay.
And, you know, it's my understanding Kathy has served in this role historically, so she probably has much more detail than I do, but, but, you know, that every year there are one or two issues generally that come up.
Usually what happens is the superintendent and the board member that's assigned, and one of the folks from Community Services gets on the bus and drives around.
Oh.
And looks at the different stops and the different concerns, and, you know, the location, and also about, a lot of times, folks want their child picked up at the end of their driveway, but there's a stop that's nearby, and it also looks at the age of the child and if it's, if there's a busy intersection. So sometimes you actually end up going on the bus two or three times, and usually you're able to resolve the issue. Sometimes we're able to accommodate the parent, sometimes we're not. And it all depends on looking at the big picture for all the students. And, you know, if we pick up one person at the end of their driveway for maybe a reason that's not as clear, then you've got other parents that say, well, I want my child picked up at the end of my driveway. And, you know, sometimes we'll do that because there's a very busy intersection nearby, and the child is six years old. And then other times, it's a high school student, and there isn't a busy intersection nearby, and so we might not accommodate that parent. So it's, it's an, actually, it's an interesting job.
Great. Thank you for serving all those years, Kathy, and for giving us that explanation. I appreciate that. Okay. All those in favor? Seven oh. All right. We will move on now to item number seven, committee reports. Are there any committee reports?
I will give a report, actually.
Okay. John?
So the Finance Committee met August 23rd, and I think the highlight of the meeting, and Meredith touched on this briefly, but was the report from the Facilities Director, Greg Marles, about the summer work that was done. And I have a two-page report in front of me, and I won't read it all, but some highlights. Three classrooms painted in Poncove, the stairwells at the high school have been painted, replacement middle school exterior lobby ceiling installed, exterior front painting at the middle school and painting of the columns. Weather stripping installation on all doors at the high school, and, and energy efficiency has been a big focus of the Facilities Department. They had, they did a, a fair amount of training of staff, maintenance and custodial staff in terms of asbestos awareness, bloodborne pathogen training, workplace harassment, and so forth. And then some big projects were completed by outside contractors, including the installation of bleachers at the high school, new domestic gas-fired water heating system at Poncove in the middle school, new solar domestic water preheating system installed at Poncove in the middle school, a new solar domestic water preheating system installed at the high school. And if you're a regular viewer of school board meetings, you'll be really excited about this one. New boiler plants installed at the high school. That project is, is happily completed and will contribute to some significant energy savings in our budget this year through the efficiency of those new systems. And then, because I'm an IT guy, I'm going to say, air conditioning system was installed in the middle school server room, important to keeping those machines working properly. And asbestos abatement completed at the high school. And again, there's a lot more on this list, but they clearly worked very hard this summer to get the school ready for the year. Thank you.
Any other committee reports? Are we going to have a policy committee in, in the next month or so?
Yeah, I will put together a policy committee and get back to the board on when that will be.
Okay, great. There are a couple of requests, and I will send those to you for your consideration.
That'd be great.
And we'll, those will be posted with the agenda when you call the meeting then.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We will also be holding a school board retreat so we can look at our, sort of recommit to the goals that, that we have outlined in the past. We had a spring retreat with our interim superintendent and outlined some goals, and we'd like to take a look at those with our new superintendent and see what else may be on the horizon. That is tentatively scheduled for September 30th, and the, the location will be announced shortly. I, I need to find a place to have that. Okay, any, yes?
Excuse me. I didn't, before you move on, I just wanted to state that the Curriculum Committee will touch base with Meredith after the retreat and have more information, as well as the Health and Wellness Committee.
Teaching and learning and.
Teaching and learning, thank you. That's the wrong word, curriculum. Teaching and Learning Committee will touch base and.
Right.
We'll go forward with recommendations from Meredith and how they relate to the goals.
Right. And to add to that, because I think sort of what you're getting at is, during this time, we will also be looking at our, our committee structure and how that is serving the district, and if we want, you know, we will be assessing those committees and how we'll continue with those committees. So I'm happy to report back on that next month. All right. Anything else?
I have a quick question, and it's, might have already happened while I was missing for the last meeting, but we do have an insurance bipartisan committee between the teachers and the two members of the school board. And last I had heard that the teachers were meeting to pick some people. I just wanted to know what the status of that is.
Yes.
And, because I think that some of the town is particularly interested in, since I'm on the corner, I wouldn't mind knowing about it as well.
It is my understanding that their members have not been chosen yet, but we are working towards that end for their October meeting, so.
Okay, is that early October, or do you know early?
It is the second Wednesday in October, I believe, that the Education Association meets.
Okay, the only reason I state that is, right in October, November is about the time, for free, these entities provide you with all this sort of information and plan design and all sorts of things. This is when we're doing, in my, my firm, this is the time to get moving, October, November, so you can, so you can roll it out in January. So I've been out and haven't been in direct communication, but I'm glad to hear this, early October, but there'll have to be some work, I mean, now's the time to get a lot of free advice and a lot of free information about whether or not there will be savings or not. But we have to do it in October, November, and December.
Okay. All right. Thank you, David. All right. Moving on to item number eight, school board agenda request. Are there any requests for the agenda next month? Seeing none, move on to item nine, announcements of upcoming meetings. Look for a policy meeting, it sounds like. And I think I announced the retreat, and that's all I know about the agenda.
Finance on the 27th, I believe there's a Finance Committee meeting scheduled, and then.
And our workshop. Okay.
Well, if I, if you're done, Meredith. Jeff ran away really quickly. I, I thought the open house, I mean, the teacher meet and greet with parents at high school went extremely well, considering that you have to attend eight, seven or eight different periods, and I thought it was excellent. I was particularly impressed, and I did want to report this because I think it covers a lot of areas we've been working on the last couple of years. I was particularly impressed by what the language people are doing in terms of using computers and tracking, without going to logic, various categories of language, like grammar, sentence structure, listening, speaking. And the, each task is graded according to those subgroups, and therefore they can then break it out and figure out from that exactly what areas certain people need work, what areas the teacher needs to improve. I thought it was a great mixing of technology and to improve the delivery of what used to be a fairly formalistic learning. I was just impressed by it, and they're rolling it out this year for the first time.
Okay. Thank you. To add on to Meredith's announcement of the workshop on the 27th, Finance will meet, and then we will have a workshop on two of the goals that the DLT and the board has paired together to support. And those goals are the professional learning communities, and our second goal would be literacy. So we'll have some brief presentations on those for anyone who's interested. And we'll see where we are and where we're headed with those goals, and those will be long-term goals that we are supporting together. So, okay. All right. Any other items? Okay. So may I have a motion to adjourn?
So I'll move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you very much.
Did we break the record for while Hillman was on the board for the shortest meeting?
I'm sure.